Okay, thank you. All right, this is the March 2nd, 2021 Planning Board meeting. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this is being brought to you by Area 58 Community Access Media. So tonight, this is a meeting over the zoning articles. And I think, I'm just going to turn it over to Jim Walsh. I think we have one article that is going to be withdrawn this evening before we start.
Right, so the master developer for the urban renewal area had put in a request to increase the building height in the Green Business Park from 40 feet to 65 feet. There was some discussion at the previous redevelopment authority meeting about a month ago. And I think the consensus was is that at this time, it's a kind of a big change and it has implications for fire and maybe some other public services. And so Mr. McLaughlin, who represents the developer, requested to remove that from the agenda. So that gives the town and the redevelopment authority the time it needs to, I guess, answer, you know, questions and implications of the proposed development. Gives people an opportunity to have those questions answered over time and then with the thought of coming back for a fall town meeting to address the height issue.
Okay. So entertain a motion to withdraw.
I will make a motion to withdraw the height changes from 40 to 65 feet.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, a second by Ellen Sedillo, and further discussion. And Mr. Robinson, we just started and we
Yeah, we get there. We weren't downstairs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to withdraw an article. It's the height article. So we have a letter right in front of you there on your desk and
Actually, there was a verbal request from Ms. McLaughlin. The email that you see, that's from the fire department that they've reviewed all the zoning articles.
Okay. So we're just going to take that off, take that out of our packet. So your motion and second, further discussion, seeing none.
Don't forget we have a public hearing, so
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, before we do that then, I guess, we'll just hold on that. All right, we have a public hearing notice. I forgot to read this. The Town of Cava Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to MGL 40A subsection 5 on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, at the Cava Town Hall Meeting Room. This is one. Yeah, we're in one, right?
Yes.
108 Main Street, Cava, Mass. at 7:00 PM to consider the adoption of the following proposed zoning bylaw and map amendments. The amendment to amend the Cava zoning by law by, and so I get, so I have to read all these articles?
Do you want me to do that for you?
No, I can do that.
Okay.
I have my glasses, so I can do that. To amend the Cava zoning by law by amending Article
Six.
Six, definition, definition of townhouse to include two family units or duplexes. The second is to amend the Cava zoning by law by amending section 2320, Table of Dimensional Requirements, Maximum Building Height, feet to increase the maximum building height in the Green Business Park zoning district from 40 to 65. The next is to amend the Cava zoning by law amending section 5000, Non-Medical Marijuana Overlay District by allowing cultivation, processing, and retail uses to occur in both non-medical marijuana overlay districts. Next is to amend the Cava zoning by law by amending section 3500, Signs to Reorganize the Bylaw to Permit the Town Administrator to Designate Additional Town Employees to Assist the Building Commissioner in Removing Illegal Signs, Changing the Process for Removing Illegal Signs, and Changing the Footnotes from Symbols to Numbers. Next is to amend the Cava zoning by law by amending section 3580, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installations to Clarify the Bylaw by Adding a Dimensional Table by Making the Reduced Setbacks for Conventional and Dual-Use Solar Installation the Same by Allowing Reduced Footage, Frontage, and by Adding a New Subsection to Address the Scale, oh, to Address the Sale or Transfer of Solar Projects. Next is to amend the Cava zoning by law by Adding a New Section 3590 for Solar Canopies. Next is to amend section 3700 Floodplane District of the Cava zoning by law by Updating the Floodplane Regulations. And the next is to amend the Cava zoning by law by Adding a New Section 4000, Single-Family Cluster Development. The Complete Text of the Proposed Amendments and Zoning Map are on file with the Cava Town Clerk. 108 Main Street, Cava, Mass. are available during normal business hours. The Board invites all interested parties to attend and offer comments on the proposed zoning amendments. Cava Planning Board Members Bruce Mackey, Chairman Kevin Robinson, Vice Chair John Gasky, Ellen Sedillo, Cornelia Shea, and Richard Dion, Associate Member. All right, so, and then may also say we're also via Zoom tonight. And you can click the link on the agenda, on the town agenda on your computer or telephone. Now, so we have a motion and a second to withdraw the amendment for, the bylaw for height. So we have motion second, we had further discussion. Okay, so we're going to have to do a roll call.
Don't you want a public input too?
Oh, that's right, it is a public meeting, yes. Okay, under further discussion. Okay, is there anyone that wants to make any comments about withdrawing the 65-foot height bylaw? Okay, seeing none. Let's do a vote on that.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Okay, thank you. So that was unanimous. Okay, so we'll go on and so we'll go by the order that was on the agenda. So the first is the definition, Townhouse Definition by Law. It's an article to see if the town will vote to amend Article 6 of the zoning, Cava zoning by law, definition of townhouse as shown below with additions in bold and deletions in strike through or take any other action relative thereto. Townhouse shall mean a single building or group of buildings in a single lot or multiple lots, not necessarily individual building lots, containing at least two but not more than five dwelling units per building created in accordance with the provisions of section 3900 herein. So the informational summary is the purpose of the proposed change is to correct a discrepancy between the Townhouse Development bylaw, section 3900, and the current definition of townhouse found in Article 6 of the Cava zoning by law. Section 3945 of the Townhouse Development bylaw states that duplexes and/or two-family dwellings shall be allowed in a townhouse development. The current townhouse definition defines a townhouse as more than two units per building but not more than five dwellings, dwelling units per building. Do you want to, do you, would you have any comments on that, Jim, or how this came about?
Right. We were working with the applicant and during the course of working with that applicant, just determined that there's a discrepancy of what's stated in the bylaw itself. So in the Townhouse Development bylaw, it says it's, you know, more than, I'm sorry, the bylaw allows for two families or duplexes but not more than 25% of the total units. Whereas in the definition, it's more than two, so it does not include duplex or two-family as part of that. So this is to just clean it up and make the definition and the language in the bylaw, Townhouse Development bylaw, consistent with each other.
All right, does any of the board members have any questions about this? Okay, seeing none.
One thing.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, okay. John was going to speak and then you can speak, Sarah.
In here, it looks like they're adding or multiple lots, not necessarily individual building lots. What, what exactly are they looking for with that?
So some of the larger townhouse developments might be groupings of houses on one or two or three lots versus individual building lots. So that, that was the language to try to clarify that.
So some of, so some of these units, they don't have a lot per unit. It may be several lots for the whole
Within the entire
For the, for the development, so it's more of a complex than
Yeah.
So it's, so it's a, it's a townhouse development as, or complex as opposed to just a townhouse.
Yeah, on a single lot, yeah. As like a, a single lot for a house.
Well, it seems to me that the multiple lots, as far as the definition of a townhouse, doesn't seem to make sense.
Do you want to
If you got, you've got, you've got one building, you're talking, a townhouse, you're talking about a single building. And talking about it covering multiple building lots.
Well, not, not one building cover, covering several lots.
Right, but that would be a
It'd be a complex.
Right, but that would be, that would be a complex, not a townhouse. I know it seems like we're splitting hairs here, but if we're, if we're going to bring everything within alignment, then putting a building on multiple lots
No, that's not the, the ten is not to put on multiple lots. It's that there be multiple buildings, so there could be
Multiple buildings on
Two or three buildings on one lot.
Right, multiple buildings
The major, a septic system, but then within that same development, there might be another
Right, but that, but that, but that takes away from just a townhouse as, and it becomes a town, it becomes a complex, like an apartment complex or
Right, but the definition relates to
Division, subdivision or something like that. It's much greater than just one townhouse and we're looking at the definition of a townhouse.
Well, the, the townhouse within the context of the Townhouse Development bylaw. So the, the Townhouse Development bylaw, and then if you see it towards the end, it makes a reference to section 3900, so that's the Townhouse Development bylaw.
Right.
Which is, is a bylaw dealing with multiple townhouse units on, on one or maybe several properties as part of one
Right, I understand, but again, we're going back to the definition of a townhouse and we're looking to correct the definition of a townhouse
Mm-hmm.
as opposed to a townhouse development or townhouse complex. If you want, if you're looking to, if you're looking to say a townhouse development will
All right, so we, I got you. Take the language out of the lots or whatever and we're just strictly focused on the structure.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Sarah Hewens?
Yes, I was simply going to ask the members of your board to speak into the microphone because I couldn't understand whoever that was speaking.
Oh, John.
I couldn't understand Jim and I couldn't understand you, Bruce.
Okay, so
I couldn't understand you either, Bruce.
Okay, so if, so when you're speaking, in order for the people to hear, yeah, on, that are online here on the Zoom meeting, if you could speak within an inch or two from the microphone so that they can hear you.
Should we have Mr. Gasky just give a quick summary of what his point was?
Yeah, maybe you want to go over that again, John.
Okay, the point that, the point that I was trying to make, let me get this a little bit better, is when we're looking at the definition of a townhouse, the, the article that we're looking at is seeking to define the townhouse as covering multiple lots. And the discussion is, am I getting this right here, that we're, we're talking about a complex as, a complex covering multiple lots, not a single building slash townhouse covering multiple lots. So the, the argument being that if we're defining a townhouse, it's a single building, not necessarily something that covers multiple lots, not a complex.
Right, so
I think I got that
Defining the structure, not, not the type of development.
Right.
And so just to be clear, so what we should do is, do we want to cross out language on a single lot or multiple lots, not necessarily building lots? Would you, is that what you're suggesting is to strip that language out?
Yes. Yep. And, and, well, even, I mean, when you're talking about townhouse shall mean a single Not, it's, once you get into a group of buildings, you get into, you get into the complex or development.
I, I see somebody else in the audience, Sarah Sterns?
Chairman, do you want to open it up to public comment?
Okay, I guess we can do this simultaneously. We can open up the public comment. I mean, I do see people raising their hands. If, does anybody want to make a comment? I'll just open this up to public comment also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Sarah Sterns.
Yeah, you might want to get on the microphone, Sarah, thank you.
I've been on that Zoom before. For the record, Sarah Sterns, 26 Tremont Street. I just was going to ask you, Mr. Chairman, to reread the original definition and then the proposed, just for clarity. I just got a little muddled with the discussion about the lots.
Okay, the original as it stands now is the one that's highlighted in the packet, I believe, Jim?
That's correct.
Okay, so right now, the definition reads, "Townhouse shall meet a single building or group of buildings on a single lot containing more than two but not more than five dwelling units per building created in accordance with the provisions of section 3900 herein." So it says, "Townhouse shall mean a single building or a group of buildings on a single lot containing more than two"
But not
"but not more than five dwellings per building." And I think there was a question at one time, it says containing more than two, there was a question if that meant three to five units, but, but with this revised bylaw, it does say it containing at least two but not more than five.
So was the
On a single lot.
Was the multiple lots question added somewhere along the line? That's where my confusion was.
Yeah, yeah, why did you want to add that, Jim?
There were some townhouse developments that were on multiple, not just one piece of land, but on multiple parcels. So we just wanted to make sure that those type of developments could be, you know, developed in the future. But another alternative to what's in writing here could be that we take the existing townhouse definition and then cross out the more than, and then that leaves you, I think, with the language that you want and it avoids dealing with the lots and
Yeah, well, but we, we would also need to strike out the group of buildings. I mean, it's, a townhouse is one building.
Well, it's
No, that's not correct.
Yeah, if you can have townhouses
Townhouses, so you have
That are attached.
Around the corner.
Yeah.
And we have five of them. They're not a complex, they're townhouses. They're single, they're single dwellings, single house or dwellings that has one unit, but there's five of them on the property. So they're
Five townhouses.
Five townhouses.
So they're five individual buildings.
Or are there six?
No, it's a townhouse.
So a, a townhouse is one building.
Five. It's a townhouse comprising five building units.
They comprise the five different, thank you, or six different buildings.
Five townhouses.
But it's still townhouses.
Well, that's, that's the one on the other side of Mizelli Plaza, on the right side of Mizelli Plaza you're talking about?
You're talking about next to
Where are these?
Kind of across from
Across from ground effects or the
Yeah, the ground. Okay, okay. Those
I, I, I'm not arguing you, I'm just letting you know, that's not a complex.
I underst, I understand that's
Considered townhouses.
Right, I understand they're considered townhouses, but they're still individual buildings.
Well, they're not, they're not. They were, and they were to be connected, so it was supposed to be two buildings connected, so they're, they're duplexes. So we have two, two, and two. And if you go to the site
This is exactly what we're having in conversation.
So, well, this, well, if we go to the site, you see that they are connected. They are connected by a roof between the two buildings and then there's a, a deck underneath the roof connecting the buildings. And it, it was revised, what the planning board approved were three duplexes there and they were to be joined. And what happened is, is the developer started, the developer became ill, I don't, I think some foundations were put in the ground, then it, the project went for a few years or a year or two, sitting idle, it was bought by another developer. They finally built the buildings and they eliminated some doors and, and things, so there were changes to the, to the buildings. But they are three duplexes, that's what they are. I mean, if you look from the road, it looks like six individual buildings, but they're, they are connected together, so it's two buildings connected together. And so that's, that's what we have there.
But
And that was on one lot.
Are they non-conforming currently?
No, they, they conform, they conform because they are attached. But changes happen, builders changed, different things happened over the years, I think building inspectors changed, so, but they are, so they do have a roof between them, so there's three duplexes. Not, you're typical type of duplex, I guess, but they are duplexes under the definition of the law or under our, under our subdivision law or townhouse laws. Is that correct, Jim?
Well, I think there's different interpretations, I mean, I don't mean legal interpretations, but different ways of constructing a, you know, townhouse. So in this case, you know, this was before I came to town and so they were connected, you know, so they're not completely detached, they're connected, so I believe that met the, you know, the requirement of the bylaw. Except by our definition, if you only have two, then that does not meet the definition because it's more than two. And so that's the thing that we're trying to correct is
Right.
To let people know that it's at least two units together, either duplex or two-family, and then inwind building up to five dwelling units. And I think that's, that's the key. And then I think John's pointing out that maybe when they originally put this bylaw together, they're defining a townhouse, they were thinking of townhouse development, but they're defining the townhouse kind of beyond, you know, that very discreet
Beyond the scope of a building.
Right, beyond the scope of the building.
I think the wording's a little confusing.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Sarah, pass another.
Thank you. Just as someone who has worked quite a bit recently with the townhouse section of our bylaw, I think Jim is right in that the definition of the townhouse, of a townhouse, doesn't match what's listed in terms of number of units in the section of the bylaw, which we've all talked about. But I think to Mr. Gasky's point, you're right. Townhouse development as a term is not defined anywhere. Townhouse is used almost interchangeably with townhouse development throughout the section of the bylaw, but townhouse was defined as something, as it stands today, it's defined as something that doesn't match the numerical unit numbers in the bylaw section. If I may make a recommendation, I think that simpler is better for this. I'm not sure why lots are being added or into this because I think to your point, we're not defining townhouse development, we're defining townhouse, the structures within a development. So I think to simplify, it would make sense to just leave it as on a single lot, that is part of the definition of a townhouse development anyway, so we're not really changing anything and perhaps just eliminate more than two units and go from there. I think that that covers the duplexes, I think that that makes sense, and I think that that relates back to the townhouse development section where duplexes are referenced throughout that section. So I do think that will make things easier going forward and it encompasses develop, I don't even want to say the word development, encompasses townhouses that have already been built and that can be built in the future. I think it just makes things cleaner, but I think just simplifying it in every way possible would be the best way forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
To John's point, I, I do see how or group of buildings on a single lot or multiple lots, not necessarily individual, individual building lots should probably not be in here.
Did you have some? Did you have some, Doc, uh, Mr. Belbin?
Do you want to switch and grab someone from?
Uh, if you want to speak and then we'll, I can, if I, I can get somebody, we'll do the Zoom.
Okay. Robert Belbin, twenty-six Gate Street, I think I'm loud enough for this. So my question with this is, this is a definition in townhouse. The problem is. You're including two-family units. Can we define what is a two-family unit? There's no two-family definition in our bylaws. So you're defining, can you define what is two-family units? What is that definition?
Uh, well, I think it says here, townhouse shall mean a single building or a group of buildings on a single lot. Containing at least two more than five dwelling units per building.
I, I can see your point where it doesn't differentiate between a, a two-family or a two-unit townhouse and a, and a duplex, but maybe we should include a common wall in the townhouse definition.
Well, sometimes it's a common wall though, and then sometimes it's, it, it. Well, we do have one, we do have some in town that are just connected. They don't have common foundations, but they are connected by a roof. I'm trying to think, the ones on Chance Court are connected garage, they have dwelling unit, garage, garage, and then dwelling unit. And so they are connected by the common wall in the garage. Carper Lantern Lane, you have five units. And they're all on one foundation. Five, five dwelling units and they're all connected by the walls between each unit, but they're, they're together.
Well, Mr. Chairman, and like I said, is that there is no definition for two-family home in our definitions, in our bylaws. And here you're creating a, a definition of a townhouse to include a two-family, but you don't have what really is a two-family. If you're saying dwelling units, then we have another issue here, is that under the um, accessory apartment bylaw also, you now have two units there too, which technically is a two-family home. Okay, so you have some.
A quick question, Bob.
Yes.
Um, under accessory dwellings, is there is a requirement for no kitchen or?
No, 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 for accessory apartment, you're limited to under eight hundred square feet unless you get a special permit from the zoning board. Okay, if you want to talk about what units are, under chapter um, four-ten-point-one-zero-zero under Health and Safety Code, it determines what a unit must include. Okay, so in some way, shape, or form, you have to go ahead and make a definition of what a two-family home is.
Well, I would think that a two-family townhouse would be two units that were individually owned. Whereas in your case, if you're talking about a house with an accessory. The whole dwelling is owned by one person.
Well, it.
But you have an accessory apartment.
But you can also have one single owner for a townhouse development and you can rent out that other side. Like a duplex, and a lot of people do that with duplexes. And if you're allowing a townhouse development to have a duplex on one lot or two townhouse units on one lot. Okay, do you understand where I'm coming at here is that you're now creating a two-family home on one lot? And under our bylaws, it does say that you can build up up to thirty percent of your lot. Okay, so if you have a two, if you have a two-acre lot, you can actually put two houses on there. Okay, on one lot. Okay, so we really need to decide if you're gonna add two-family unit in the townhouse language, you have to determine, and that can be on one lot. You've now created a two-family home on one lot, could be a townhouse development, that's fine, you've now turned around and created the town to be a two-family.
All right, yes, Jim?
All right, so in the definitions, there's dwelling two-family shall mean a single building containing two dwelling units. So I believe that covers, so if you use the terminology and don't use duplex, well, actually duplex or two-family. Um, a building containing two dwelling units attached, designed or arranged as separate housekeeping units within the dwelling. Okay, so duplex and two-families are defined within the bylaws.
And where is that defined? It's not in the definitions, is that in the townhouse development?
No, that's in the definitions.
Under two-family?
Uh, dwelling two-family is dwelling detached, single-family. And then dwelling two-family, dwelling multifamily.
So that brings me back to the point of an accessory apartment, on top of that is two separate dwelling units on one lot. So if you're talking, it's two.
Right, but this, the definition that's um, in the bylaw here for the townhouse, it points back to section thirty-nine hundred, which means that you would have to follow section thirty-nine hundred townhouse development bylaw in order to do a two-family or duplex townhouse.
On one lot.
On one lot, because it's going to be on a common lot with other uh, townhouses.
Not necessarily, because you're creating, correct?
Can I mention something, Bob, to, to, to carry on, I guess to maybe counter the point that you're bringing up? Is uh, thirty-nine forty-five, which is part of what's in the informational summary. Down here, it talks about duplexes and/or two-family dwellings shall be allowed in the townhouse development. And shall adhere to all requirements set forth by the law and at no time shall more than twenty-five percent uh, of the total number of units proposed in a townhouse development be comprised of duplexes or family, or two-family structures. So if you're talking about a, a, a house, two-family house on a single lot. Um, that's not in a townhouse development. That's more than twenty-five percent.
But are we talking a townhouse development or are we talking?
Well, this is part of the townhouse development bylaw.
What I'm saying here is that, but you're saying that somebody could come in with one lot and I want to create a townhouse development, but I only want two dwelling units on there for one building.
Well, they would have to meet all the minimums, um, they would have to go through the townhouse development bylaw, so there's a lot of.
Their lot would have to have two nula acres, net usable land, uh, two net usable land acres in, in order to do that. But maybe by adding the word um, individual after five in the proposed bylaw, no more than five individual dwelling units per building might more clearly separate.
Is that my, my, like I said, the issue comes into saying that you have someone with one, say they got five acres of land, but I want to put two houses on there. All right, and say, hey, this is what I'm gonna do, I'm making a townhouse development, all right? Then that's allowed.
It, it is, but the requirements in the townhouse require, I think, uh, there's, there's requirements for open space and uh.
Right, minimum lot sizes.
And it's to concentrate the building in one area and leave the more undisturbed area, but yes, technically if somebody had a couple acres, they could come in and apply for a townhouse development and uh, if they met all the requirements, I, I believe that would be possible, yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I don't know, why would somebody want to do that?
Well, because the, the town is, that's, that's kind of why we put the townhouse development to so that rather than him breaking it up into two separate individual housing lots, that it'd be more concentrated and allow more open space.
Yeah, I think that also would open up the door for like a mother-daughter type add-ons for, for houses.
Instead of being constrained by the accessory apartment by law.
Yeah, because I know that there's, uh, there's a house on the corner, I believe it's Plymouth and Green. That has a um, basically a two-family home.
Is it, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, it's.
I'm familiar with the building, but I'm not sure how.
It is, it's the way it's set up, it's set up as a two-family home.
It's not a, it's not a townhouse setup?
I, I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't.
In my, in my, in my definite, my, my, my inherent definition of a, of a, of a townhouse is uh, essentially a duplex, maybe a two-story duplex.
That's my understanding too, with a, with some sort of common separator wall.
Right.
That, that was my understanding, but I don't know if that one on Plymouth and Green Street behind the uh, the, the dog mall there, I don't know.
No, I'm, yeah, no, I'm referring, uh, I'm not referring to the one, uh, I'm referring to the one, um.
Oh, on the corner?
On the corner.
Next to the car wash.
No, 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 um, across from the um.
The old church.
Yeah, not the old church itself, but I know what you're talking about, I agree, that is kind of basically, that's like an apartment building. But across from them, that house is set up as a two-family.
It's the old.
It's in the.
The bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was licensed for that.
It was, but it's a two-family home. There, it's not a.
Mr. Belbin? I mean, the thing right now is, we have a two-family townhouse bylaw in place. We have, we, we have this in place, we're just clarifying it right now with this bylaw. So this discussion of whether it's right or wrong or whatever, it's, we have it right now. Do you agree? I mean, we have it right now, so we're just kind of trying to clarify it, but uh.
Just to clarify, on that property there, um, they had a um, oh, what was it called, a carriage house before?
Mm-hmm.
And they went to, they actually got a permit to build an addition.
Right.
They went ahead and started building the additions, they went to the zoning board to ask for an accessory apartment bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
They went through it, they got approvals through them, it's actually bigger than what it's supposed to be, but no matter what, it is what it is. Um, I did the same thing, I got screwed, but no matter what, that is considered a single-family home with accessory apartment. The problem is, you are correct, it is a two-family home, because it is split between a mudroom in between both properties.
Correct.
Go in one door, this door to the apartment, this side over here to the house, they have two separate electrical boxes.
Yes.
That allows for separate utilities.
Correct.
As a two-family home. But they were allowed by the accessory apartment bylaw by the zoning board, greater than eight hundred square feet. All right, so, I mean, this is where there's that, that fine line, my house, I have an addition, I have a single-family home, I have an addition to my house. I don't have locked doors between both doors. I have one entrance to go right through, you can walk through, there's no locks, no doorknobs, anything there. Okay, we have one utility in our house, power comes in, it goes to everywhere. Okay, I have an addition to my house, okay? Now, if I wanted to make that into a two-family home, I could block off that door and say, hey, I got a two-family home now, but I don't. Okay, I have an addition, so this is where I say you have to turn around and clarify these, what is a single-family, what is a two-family? The accessory apartment bylaw, you guys need to work on that.
Yeah, well, we can take a look at that at some other time, but your point is, is taken, Jim?
So my suggestion, we would take the existing townhouse bylaw, the definition. And then uh, strike out more than, and so then it will read, townhouse shall mean a single building or a group of buildings on a single lot containing two, but not more than five dwelling units per building. Created in accordance with the provisions of thirty-nine hundred herein. And um, and just try to keep a, a simple change so that we can move forward, so that we know that uh, anyone who's building or has built or is building, you know, duplex or two-family units within the townhouse, you know, development bylaw, that, you know, that they're, those are now, you know, that they're legal units that you know, that we've corrected this kind of oversight, because it just, it's very conflicting where within the body of the townhouse development bylaw, it says you can have, you know, duplex or two-family. But then the definition that we have to rely on does not, does not say specifically that you can have that. You know, the definition of the townhouse bylaw, or the definition of a townhouse is, does not allow, or does not specify the two, it's more than two, and I think that's.
That's right.
Clarification.
That, that, yeah, that's what I.
I understand John's point about, yeah, you're talking about buildings, but we already have this, you know, kind of body of bylaw, let's just make it simple. I think everyone understands that within the townhouse development bylaw, we're just saying, okay, we're clarifying it's two or up in, two, but no more than five dwelling units per building.
I, I, I think we should add the word individual dwelling units, just individual two-dwelling units. There, there's no other way to separate the difference between a duplex and a townhouse at this point. If, if these changes were made, which I agree they should be made to bring the, the laws in alignment. But I think we, like Bob said, we need to categorize it as individual units, so that each pers, they each have their own electrical box, they each have their own plumbing and septic, septic.
Okay, um, yeah, I don't, how would you write that?
I, I would just add the word individual after the word five dwelling units, five containing at least two, but not more than five individual dwelling units per building.
Well, that's pretty much what it says though, isn't it?
It, it's just missing the word individual, but it would clarify.
Oh, okay.
It would, it would clear the difference between accessory apartment with one utility and differentiate it from a townhouse which would have separate plumbing and utilities as an individual dwelling unit.
So now, this definition for dwelling unit shall mean a building or part of a building occupied or suitable for occupancy as a residence in a range for the use of one or more individuals living as a single housekeeping unit with its own cooking, living, sanitary, and sleeping facilities. So isn't that already kind of covered?
Well, that, that's what Bob, that was Bob's point too, that's also an accessory apartment.
Right, but within the townhouse development, that's not.
Yeah, this is.
And then accessories are specific to, uh, I think, believe it's over, over fifty-five. Oh, it isn't? I thought it was. So that's, you know, so we already have a definition for dwelling unit and I think uh, I mean, I guess we could add individual dwelling. Individual dwelling units. But, yeah, I think the main point is to, to clarify them, you know, to let people know that we want to be consistent with the townhouse development bylaw, which has a section that allows for two-family or duplex. And right now, the definition wouldn't allow for that.
I, 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 I see what you're saying by dwelling unit. I, I believe Ms. Stern's had a question?
Um, oh. The only other thing I wanted to add to your point, Mr. Shea, is that um, related to utilities, sometimes the developments would have shared utilities.
In, in common areas, yes. And that would require an extra, a, a separate box for that.
Yep, or shared wastewater system, shared wells, that type of thing, that's it.
Okay, I see, yep, in this town, we have shared sanitary.
Yeah, most of the townhouses, they share the common wall along with septic system.
That's true, yes.
Water. And the only difference is electricity, individual.
Right, it's because the, the waters, the water here is well, uh, the townhouses are on well water, correct? Or are they on some type of city water?
They, they, townhouses can be, have, the, the development can have individual wells or in the case of the one in North Carver, that's off, that's the North Carver water.
Yeah, whatever they choose.
Yeah. Okay, is there anybody on the Zoom that would like to speak? Okay. Okay, seeing nobody? Are you just checking, Jim?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get back to that screen if I could, see if anyone's poking their hands up, but.
Yeah, we did see Sarah, he wins that one time, but I don't know if she's gone or.
Yeah, she must have came off.
All right. All right. Okay, so can we read the, the bylaw with, with everybody's comments? That we've, have we, we've changed it somewhat?
Okay, so my most recent recommendation would be, "Townhouse shall mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot containing, strike the words more than, containing two, but not more than five dwelling units per building, created in accordance with the provisions of Section 3900 herein." And I don't know, did Connie want to include the?
No, I, I don't think that's necessary. I, I, yeah, I've been reading the definitions and the bylaws.
So that would be the, we would just strike the words more than, and then it would read, and I'll read it again. So townhouse shall mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot, comma, containing two, but not more than five dwelling units per building, created in accordance with the provisions of Section 3900 herein.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. So let's so let's vote on this. So entertain a motion, so do we have a number of this? Oh, okay, two.
Article 10.
Two, well, I don't think we know the order that they're going to be in, but so entertain a motion to let's see, how do we do this? So we're not.
So you're amending Article 6 of the definitions, definition of a townhouse bylaw to read, and then we just read the amended version of the.
Do you want me to read it in a motion? I would read it.
Yeah, so, but, so we, we vote to recommend this to town meeting, right? That's how, that's
That's correct.
That's the, that's the way it's stated, so. So, yeah, if you want to make a motion to recommend this.
Is it?
And as, and then you can read it.
Right, Article 6.
Article 6, definitions, townhouse.
Yeah.
I motion that the board recommend Article 6 to town meeting. Article 6 shall be, "Townhouse shall mean a single family or group of buildings on a single lot containing at least two, but not more than five dwelling units per building, created in accordance with the provision of Section 3900 herein," striking the words more than two.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, a second.
I might want to read that again.
Yeah, if you could read that again, I don't know if that's.
I motion.
Yeah, could you read your motion again, please?
I motion. I motion that the planning board recommend Article 6 on the town warrant, reading such as, "Townhouse shall mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot containing at least two, but not more than five dwelling units per building, created in accordance with the provisions of Section 3900 herein," striking the words more than two.
Okay.
But you're adding at least two? But really what you want to do is?
As, as I read it, at least two, yes. And then at the end, I.
More than.
I struck.
So you really want to cross out more than?
Right, striking the words more than two, that was part of the motion.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Shea, a second by Mr. Gasky for the discussion. Okay, let's do a roll call vote. To recommend.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Stilow says aye.
Okay, so that was unanimous, that was five to zero. Okay, the second is the floodplain. If you want to explain this, Jim?
Sure. So I'm not quite sure the frequency, it's about a, you know, roughly every 10 years. The Federal Flood Insurance Agency, actually it's FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, in conjunction with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Flood Insurance Program. They update the studies that are the basis of the floodplain maps that are available in each community. And so in the last year, they were proposing to update the maps, but because of COVID, everything got pushed, pushed back. And, and so they, they're very strict with the dates of their studies. And so they decided to kind of redo everything and submitted to us, you know, the proposed language to use going forward. And so what I did, I took the language from, from the state Flood Insurance Coroner's Office, and essentially just kind of redrafted the entire bylaw section. And so what we, so what we're going to do here is, we're going to, the, the bylaw proposal is to repeal the existing Section 3700 and then replace it with the language that you see here.
All right, so do, I don't have to read this whole article, I don't think, but the summary for this is, "The Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is FEMA, has updated the Plymouth County Flood Insurance Study Report and Plymouth County Flood Insurance Rate Maps. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts National Flood Insurance Program Office has requested that the town amend Section 3700 floodplain district bylaw to reflect the updated flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps." So all I know is, is when I worked for civil engineering offices, these maps would be updated periodically, as Jim said, by FEMA. And generally, it goes by, you know, the, the storms that we've had through the years, so they take all that information in. It's, it impacts more of towns that are near the ocean, but it also can impact towns that have rivers or streams through them. And so it may indicate that there's like 50-year flood and 100-year flood. And so things like that change with the study of what is happening with our climate and how much rainfall we get. So these maps are updated periodically to reflect the new type of climate that we're, we're having and the, the risk of flood to certain areas. So this is something that usually every town just automatically accepts it because it's a, it's a study by FEMA.
Right, and I'm not sure the extent in Carver, but those who are within flood zones, it's the only way they can get insurance if the town has approved floodplain bylaw. So that makes them eligible for the insurance and then, and then potentially protects them or ensures them if there's a casualty.
Exactly. So there's any further questions by any of the planning board members?
I, I, I just have two quick things. Under the floodplain, under start of construction.
Which section are you referring to?
Sorry.
Which section number?
Under, under definitions, it, it really doesn't give one. I think it's the last or second to last page of the bylaw.
3795.
But under start of construction definition, it says, "The actual start of construction means the first placement of permanent construction in a building on site, such as the pouring of slab or footings." And then the very next sentence says, "Permanent construction does not include land preparation such as excavation for a basement," and then it says footings again. I would just recommend having that second definition, or second footings removed.
So which, which definition are you looking at again?
Start of construction, it's under special flood hazard area.
Okay, so.
The last sentence of the first paragraph and the first sentence of the second paragraph under that definition, both contain the word footings, and I would recommend removing footings from the second paragraph.
Well, usually when we do something like this, it's just the acceptance of the, of the FEMA floodplain maps. I don't know if we necessarily want to start changing the bylaw right now, but.
I think what they're saying in this is, on the second paragraph, they're referring to the excavation for a basement, footings, piers, not being part of the permanent construction, whereas if the footings are already in place in the first paragraph, that's the start of construction.
Then, then maybe it's just the comma that needs to be removed between excavation for a basement, footings. And then it refers to excavation rather than the footings, because there's a comma in between them, and it changes the.
What else? Do, I'll check their base language that they sent us and clarify that, so it's really comma between basement and footings?
Yeah, excavation for a basement, footings, which I understand, or it's excavation for a basement, comma, footings. And I, I just think that comma in there.
Well, footings, excavation for footings is would be for a
Right, but.
For, for an elevated house.
Right, but in the first paragraph, it says, "Footings are part of the permanent building process."
If the footings are in the ground.
Right.
That's, I think that's what they're referring to.
But that comma makes footings its own separate. It, it, it doesn't say excavation for a basement, footings. It says excavation for a basement and footings.
Piers or foundations.
Footings, basement and footings and piers or foundations.
Well, you can read it as excavation of a basement, so you're digging out for the basement itself.
Right, which wouldn't be a permanent issue.
So you have the footings.
As defined in the first paragraph.
Or foundations. Direction temporary forms. So let me, let me clarify that with this, with the state to make sure that we're not taking out something that should be there as written. Because that's, that's more or less the exercise, but it's, we're doing something just basically doing what they provided us and writing.
But the state is saying that footings, in this, the way it's written, it says, and maybe it's just a typo, but it's saying, "Footings are both permanent and non-permanent."
No, no, they're talking about, the way that I read it, is that they're talking about excavation for footings.
Well, it says excavation for a basement, and the comma means and, so.
No, it does not mean and. Because if you go in addition to.
In addition.
So excavation for a basement.
Yeah.
Footings, piers or foundations.
So.
So it's calling out four different things.
Okay, I see what you're, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Footings are separate of, of a foundation.
That, yeah, but they are permanent.
Where they're separate.
Right, but they're a permanent issue.
They're keyed into each, they're locked and keyed into each other.
So this is, this is saying excavation for a basement, including footings, piers. So excavation for footings, excavation for piers, or excavation for foundations?
Correct.
Is that, then, then I'm all right with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, as long as it's clarified. And then the other one is the definition of recreational vehicles. It either should match the one that we currently have, or the one we currently have should match this, and, and that would be my other.
So what's the one, what are you referring to, are you referring to in the?
In, in the bylaws, yeah.
In the main body, body of the zoning bylaw?
Yeah, where it defines what a recreation.
Because I think they're defining it in terms of flood. Flood hazard, flood impact.
I, I actually like this definition better, but because we already have one, we should, it should be in, in alignment with it. They should be the, the same definition.
So so I'm just saying that in regard to the, this is within the context of the floodplain bylaw. So that's, do I want to change this?
We could take a look at that later, but I don't think, I mean, if this, all this information came with the map, the state provided this, we can't change this.
And so I drafted everything up, I sent it back to the state, they reviewed it, they made one minor correction, and then, so this is what we have.
Yep. No, I, I, this is a better, more defined definition of it, so.
Maybe we can look at that, make a note of that, look at that later.
But I'm saying that we should match both definitions up to agree with each other.
We can have, Jim, yeah, take a look at that later when we do more review over the bylaws, maybe we can take a look at that, see if that needs to be changed. All right, so we all set? Any other questions by board members? Anything else?
How, how long has this been in existence?
The floodplain maps?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is, 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 it's been, as far as I can remember, I started work in the 70s, so, you know, each, we, every engineering office gets their floodplain maps from the state or town that they work in, you know, each town is different. So we used to have a box full of floodplain maps for each town that we worked in. And so, and then, like I say, they, they change them periodically with the new studies for the flooding. And they've been in existence for as long as I can remember, I don't know the exact date when they started all this, but they've been around for a while.
So some of this goes back as far as 1982, and then the last time the maps were updated were 2012.
Okay.
So what about houses that were built in the 70s? Would they have to go by these?
Well.
Oh, is that before?
I mean, houses, they, yeah, I mean, it, this is mostly for insurance purposes. So if you're in a flood zone, you can get insurance for your house. But I know, like, we, I did a lot of work in Situate where the houses actually had to be raised. So in order for the people to qualify for flood insurance, if your house was below the flood level, you'd have to put it on piers, jack it up, and then put it on piers, so it would be above the flood level of, that was on the, on the maps. And, and then you could, you know, get flood insurance. But
Because we have.
But not every, not, not everybody does that, you know, they, they keep the house, and also, of course, some don't do it, and then the house gets washed away too, so. of course, some don't do it, and then the house gets washed away too, so that can happen. Doesn't happen much in Carver, but, you know, it happens along the seashore, you know, along the ocean.
Hey, Jim, I know it's a little off topic, but these maps, are they, are they available on the city website as well?
Not yet, so.
Once it's approved?
Right, once we get it approved, we'll get, we'll get electronic copies of the map so they can be posted, and then, you know, maybe we'll get a set of the paper maps for the town.
Roger that.
All right, any other questions? Any questions by anybody in the audience? Any questions by anybody on Zoom? All right, seeing none, entertaining a motion to recommend the floodplain article to town meeting.
Do we know the article number on this?
Um, no, we don't have the article numbers yet.
District thirty-seven hundred.
Right, it's thirty-seven hundred floodplain district, and what we're doing will be to repeal the existing thirty-seven hundred, article thirty-seven hundred, and replace it with this article thirty-seven hundred.
So I would motion that the board recommends section, the revised section thirty-seven hundred floodplain district?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion from Mr. Shea, seconded by Mr. Robinson for the discussion. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Okay, so that was unanimously approved, five-zero. Well, next, non-medical marijuana. And, okay, so the non-medical marijuana overlay district, so this is an article to see if the town will vote to amend Carver zoning bylaw, section five thousand, non-medical marijuana by allowing cultivation, processing, and retail uses to occur in both non-medical marijuana overlay districts, and to remove nonexistent parcels, deletions are shown and strike through, and additions are shown in bold font, or take any other action relative thereto. So. Let me see, do we have something in here that? The informational summary. Okay, here it is. The informational summary says the planning department has received numerous inquiries from prospective marijuana facility developers that were seeking to develop retail marijuana facilities either alone or combined with cultivation slash processing facilities in either overlay district. The proposed changes to the non-medical marijuana bylaw would allow marijuana retail use and/or marijuana cultivation slash processing in either non-medical marijuana overlay district. The proposed changes would not increase the cap on retail marijuana facilities, which is currently at two, nor would it change the five-hundred-foot buffer zone around uses identified in the bylaw. So as far, I mean, I can let Jim explain exactly about this, but I know when we established the first, we have, we have an overlay district in South Carver, and we have an overlay district in North Carver. And I, so in South Carver, we have, there are two retail stores that are available in Carver. And when we originally did this, I believe that we did not allow a retail store in North Carver, we only allowed the two retail stores in South Carver. So now what we want to do is to allow, if somebody wants to start a second store, to allow that also in North Carver, so we could have two stores in South Carver, or we already have one in South Carver, so it would allow this to happen in North Carver. We, and if you want to continue with, with that thought, Jim, you know, explain the rest of what you've done here.
Sure, so this was initially brought up last year, you know, the planning board ended up voting approval for it, and it's really based on various conversations from multiple different marijuana developers, and, you know, the question is, well, I want to do a, you know, processing, you know, grow facility up in North Carver, can I also do retail? And I was like, no, it's either or, and I thought it just, why not just let the districts be flexible in terms of where you want to site your facility? So if you can find a, if you're doing retail, oh, we have one marijuana facility that found a location, was able to get it approved, and that's down in South Carver. And maybe the best thing for the town is if you don't have a, you know, you have one in a different part of town, then that way you don't have two facilities next to each other. And, you know, the, because part of the value of the facilities is that they generate taxes, and then a certain portion of those come back to the town. So if they're together, they might cannibalize their business, and then there'd be lower receipts. So you could argue that having them split might be a better thing for the town. But the other thing that was asked, you know, in different situations, different scenarios, was some operators wanted to try to open a facility where they cultivate or process marijuana, but also have a retail component to it. So it's really just to open up the, you know, make it flexible in terms of where they can have retail, where they can, you know, they could co-locate it together with the manufacturing processing, or there may be properties down in South Carver that might be appropriate more for the cultivation and processing. But just leave it up to a potential marijuana facility to come in within the overlay district, have the flexibility to, you know, choose what they want to do.
So right now, because I remember discussing this in, this with our last planner, but the cultivation and processing is, is only allowed in North Carver right now?
That's correct.
Okay, and the reason for that, as we were establishing this bylaw, was to, he thought that, or we thought, and we presented it to town meeting and it was approved, was that it would use the town water probably, or it would need town, that type of cultivation and processing would need town water. But now we find that actually, I believe that we could just do this with a single well on the property, so that would allow cultivation and processing to, to happen in, in South Carver too. But then we, we didn't, but then we, he thought that because of traffic, we would only have the two stores in South Carver where it was nearby the highway, but it just seems impractical to have two stores side by side in, in the small area, the small overlay area in South Carver, so we thought that it might be better to have it in, in North Carver, so.
I don't think we have any churches in North Carver, so.
No, no, well, we have the, you have business area up there, and there are no churches there. So that, just to clarify, so, so we have cultivation and processing only in North Carver, we also want that to go to South Carver, and we have a limit of two stores, which were originally for South Carver. We want to take, we already have one that's, that's going in in South Carver, so we're just expanding this to allow to go, or one store to go to North Carver too, if that occurs. And then you also had some changes in the map too?
Right, so it's notified by our assistant finance director, assessor, Craig Schoe, that there are a number of parcels that are, we'd call phantom parcels, they don't exist, and so he suggested that, you know, we eliminate those parcels from the listing. So those are, you know, map twenty-five lot four, map twenty-five four A, map twenty-five four B, map twenty-five four C, and map twenty-five lot five, and then on the other one, it's lot, map ninety-five lot six A. So he kind of went through it, he found out the, these parcels don't exist, but somehow the numbers are still out there. And one of his concerns is that in the future, if he assigns a parcel, one of these lot numbers, you know, map and lot numbers, it might confuse people in the future where allowing them to, to put a facility where they're not permitted. So this is just really to clean up the bylaw, to eliminate those parcels from the listing.
All right, thank you, Jim. Any questions?
Can we see those maps?
Well, we could pull them out. You looking for what can be done, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know where any of this stuff is.
Okay. So I guess for the, I mean, I could bring information to the next meeting that shows the actual parcel maps.
That's fine.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I guess I could table it and then bring it back to the next meeting.
Okay, we'll, we'll just continue this if we can do that. So what would you need, what would you need for that, Jim? You'd have to bring the assessors' maps?
Yeah, I could print out a map showing where these parcels are.
And why are they phantom lots again?
Well, I think, John, are you looking for maps for the whole districts, for the north, south, or are you just the phantom parcels?
Yeah, the, the whole thing.
The whole thing, okay.
Yeah, whatever they have, whatever they have listed here.
So these parcels are listed on the assessors' maps?
That's correct.
Okay, but why are they called phantom parcels if they're on the assessors' map?
Oh, well, the ones, so there's parcels, they've done searches to find out, you know, so you go through and you find twenty and twelve, okay, I can see that parcel, but there's other parcels, when you go and you do research on them, you can't find them on the map anywhere, so that's why they call them phantom. There are numbers out there, could have been, over the years, many parcels kind of merging or breaking off, so resulted in.
Oh, okay, so the maps just haven't been updated then, it sounds like.
Right, so they're still, yeah, they're doing a lot of updating as time goes on.
So what are you going to show, what can?
Well, what I could do, I can just ask our assessors' office to print out the parcel maps, you can print them out showing, not the, not necessarily the phantom parcels, but John is looking for, all right, so what are the parcels included in the North Carver overlay district?
Okay.
What are the parcels in the South overlay district?
I get it now.
Correct.
All right. All right, while we're still on it, that's something we can get later, so maybe we, we'll table this, but does anybody else have any questions? Maybe, is everybody else all set with this?
So this means that we can, not us, but they could grow it as well as sell it?
Well, there's, there's different things that, that happen in the marijuana industry that are allowed in, in Carver. I mean, you can sell it, you can, you can, you can have a, you can sell it, and, and you can also grow it or cultivate it, and then the other thing is, is once it's grown and cultivated, then you have to gather it up, and then you have to process it, like whatever, process it into baking goods or into something you smoke or whatever. So there are, so there's all, there's those three different things that happen with marijuana. So it's the cultivation, the processing, and then the sale. So, yeah, in each one, we allow, well, we want to allow it each North and South Carver. Well, there's been a lot of requests, I guess, to, you know, people looking for land, whether it will happen or not, but we thought we'd put it on both ends of town and see what happens. All right, any other questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Anybody on Zoom? All right, seeing none, we'll just table this, and we'll, we'll go to the next, which would be to signs, and.
Do we need a motion to?
I don't know, do we need to vote on that?
Or just, yeah, maybe just want to continue it to the next meeting.
We'll just, yeah, I think we can just say that we're going to continue it to the next meeting.
Motion to continue till next meeting.
Okay, we can do it that way, yep. So we had a motion by Cornelia Shea to continue the non-medical marijuana bylaw to the next meeting, and it was seconded by Ellen. All right, so we'll take, we'll take a vote on it. Oh, for the discussion, okay, we'll take a vote.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Okay, so now the next one will be signs. And this is amend section thirty-five hundred of the signs. It's an article to see if the town will amend the Carver zoning bylaw by amending section thirty-five hundred, deletions are shown and strike through, and additions are shown in bold font, or take any other action thereto. And. Look for the explanation.
Want to read it, Bruce?
Yeah, if you could read it, if you have it, Jim.
Sure. So the informational summary, the building commissioner requested changes to section thirty-five hundred of the zoning bylaw to make it easier for sign bylaw enforcement and to clarify sections of the bylaw. The changes are proposed to, one, reorganize the bylaw by moving the administration section of the bylaw to the beginning of the bylaw and renumbering the entire bylaw accordingly. Two, authorize the town administrator to designate another town employee in addition to the building commissioner to remove illegal or unauthorized signs. Three, to reduce the written notification period for the removal of illegal signs from thirty days to ten days. Four, to designate the building commissioner as the permitting authority for temporary removable signs. Five, to include a subsection to address site obstruction. And number six, to amend the footnotes by changing from symbols to numbers.
So this was all brought about by our last board, and, and we had a member, Jim Bogot, who's now a select person, and she thought that other than the DPW, someone else other than the DPW should be taking the signs down because they weren't being taken down quickly enough, they were, so she suggested that she would like to, to see this, so this would facilitate the, I think it was. So this would facilitate the, I think it was, she was concerned about election signs and temporary signs that after the event had happened and then nobody ever took the signs down.
Also, there's a lot of signs for training programs or other similar type of things that are these temporary signs that go in the ground and then they're there forever, you know, and they'll come in and get permits. Just to, I think her thought was to try to clean up the town. Be easier for, for the, for the town staff to clean up signs that are all over the place.
So this just allows the, the DPW department to clean up the signs where I guess it was just the DPW director was able to do that before?
Well, actually, no, it was the building commissioner.
Oh, the building commissioner.
Right, and being a, you know, part-time position, you're tied up as it is dealing with other matters. So you're, you're timed to go out and deal with signs at the, you know, kind of end of the spectrum in terms of priority list to get out there and clean up.
Okay. Any questions or comments by board members?
If it's on somebody's property, their house property, and say it's still, you know, vote for Trump or whatever, is that something, excuse me, that this is referring to as well or no? That's what you put on your own property is your own business?
Right, well, I think, you know, so if, if there's a sign that's illegal, then there's a notification process that has to happen. And then if, if that's ignored, then I believe that's the point where they can go and claim them on private property. But I think one of the bigger areas that are concerned is there's a lot of areas like the triangle down at South Main and Trimont Street where there's a lot of signs that are put up. And, and, you know, if there's an election or there's an event, they're still up there way after the event is over. Or they're in the public right of way, maybe they're on telephone poles posted up there. And they're up there for months and months, they haven't got any permits. You know, so that, it would just give, you know, the building commissioner or designee appointed by the town administrator the authority to go out and remove those signs. So it could be the DPW, you know, a lot of times the DPW, if the building commissioner says, oh, yeah, these signs can be removed, then they can go out and remove those signs. Instead of, you know, they just sit up there and sit up there. So that's what they're trying to accomplish.
Generally, after an election, the, the signs come down. I don't know what happens with the Trump sign though.
I've seen quite a few of them, that's why I just.
It'll be back in 2024.
That's right.
I thought it was March fourth.
I don't know.
We'd have to get the building commissioner and it'll look into that.
All right.
So, and then some of the other changes, so one had to deal with, you know, the removal of signs and having a designee to go in. The first kind of major thing is that kind of the administration of the thing was in the back of the bylaw. And so people had to read all the way through to the end to find out that, oh, they had to go to the planning board to get their approval rather than finding up in front that, okay, this is what you, you know, this is the process, how to go through it. And then in the various tables of permitted signs, they used different symbols like clubs or spades or asterisks. And very difficult to figure out what, what one applies. And so we just changed them and put in footnotes instead.
Yeah, it makes total sense.
Make it easier to reference. That was suggested by our legal counsel to do that. That for the most part is, is pretty much it. And then just renumbering all the other sections based on the, you know, changing things around. That was pretty much the bulk of the changes.
All right, any questions or comments by board members? Seeing none at the moment, anybody in the audience have anything to say? How about anybody on Zoom? Seeing none. Entertain a motion to recommend the amended section thirty-five hundred on signs.
I'll make a motion for planning board to bring article, bring in our vote to town hall for the amending of section thirty-five hundred.
I'll second that, Cornelia Shea second.
So we have a motion by Kevin Robinson, Cornelia Shea second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Let's vote by roll call, please.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
All right, so that's five zero to recommend a town meeting. All right, the next is solar. And this is an article to see if the town will vote to amend section thirty-five eighty of the Carver zoning bylaw titled Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installations. Deletions are shown and strike through and additions are shown in bold font or take any other action relative thereto. And let me see if I can find the.
Want me to read it?
Yes, please.
I cheated, I went and put those up.
I didn't mock those.
I took all those and put them up front.
I forgot to put little stickers on that, so.
All right, informational summary, at the twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen annual town meeting, the bylaw was amended to allow for dual-use solar projects. There were differences in the setback requirements for conventional and dual-use solar projects which caused confusion among applicants, residents, and board members as to which regulations applied. The purpose of this amendment is to make several changes to clarify the solar bylaw by making the following changes. So amend the purpose of the section thirty-five eighty-ten by including language, including conventional and dual-use solar. Amend section thirty-five eighty point ten by clarifying language regarding small-scale solar projects. And then amend the dimension and density requirements by changing the following. So what we did, we added a new dimensional table and are deleting the smart dual-use array table that's in the current bylaw. Secondly, clarifying language regarding setback in or screening waivers in the residential agricultural zoning district. And then C, make the setback requirement for conventional and dual-use solar projects installations the same. And then allow the planning board to waive all or some of the frontage requirements for sites that are well-screened from abutting properties as long as the proposed access meets Carver Fire Department standards. The planning departments and planning board have accounted several proposals for solar projects that may well, may be well-suited for the location being proposed except that the property lacks proper frontage on a public way. And solar projects are generally co-located with agricultural operations that use bog roads for, co-located with agricultural operations that use bog roads for access. The applicant must ensure that either existing or proposed access road meets Carver Fire Department standards. If the applicant is using easement or right-of-way owned by another party, then the applicant must provide a copy of an access agreement which shows the applicant has access to the project for the life of the project. Clarify language regarding abutment affidavits from all director abutters to any director abutters. And then six, add a new section thirty-five eight oh point four-four to the bylaw to address the sale or transfer of solar projects and requires a meeting with the planning board to review the site plans and conditions of approval with the new owner or transferee.
All right. When we started, first started with the large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. They were ground-mounted, they were on the ground and they, or on a cranberry bog. Since then, that was, that was the, when the original bylaws were written. And then as time evolved, then we had dual-use systems that came into effect. And they were largely put on cranberry bogs, but we did have others that were over garden areas. They were elevated and so that people could work under them or farm underneath the, under these dual-use systems. So we had, because they evolved at different times, we had different regulations for each one. And so now we're just trying to combine them to just make it, this bylaw easier to, to understand. And we also made some changes. I don't know, might have to go over page by page of what you changed, I guess.
Right, so on the first page, under section thirty-five eighty point one zero purpose, what we did is add in the language saying including conventional and, and dual-use. So it reads, "The purpose of this bylaw is to promote the creation of new large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations." With the abbreviation, "including conventional and dual-use." So that's the, the first addition. Then down below, one, two, third paragraph down, there was language in there that was referring to the small-scale solar projects. And so we had a, a couple applicants come through and it took myself and the building commissioner to figure out where they fit in into the, you know, structure of the bylaws. And so they were proposing a small-scale solar project kind of on a piece of land where they were supposed to be an accessory to, to another use. And there was no accessory use. So what we wanted to do was clarify the language to say, okay, if you're a small-scale solar project, you have to be an accessory use to an existing, either residential or commercial use. And, and that language is already in the bylaw, but we just wanted to make it crystal clear that that's, that they would have to come in as an accessory use to an existing use. And they would have to follow the other provisions of the Carver bylaw. So the, whatever the setbacks and other requirements in the particular zoning district the project was being proposed, that they would have to, you know, follow those requirements. And then what we did to add was that, add in language, "and with health and safety conditions." So they must comply with other provisions of the Carver zoning bylaws as applicable. And then added language that says, "and with health and safety conditions required by the building commissioner and fire chief and, and/or his/her designee." So that, you know, that gets reviewed by the building commissioner or the fire department. If they see a condition that's a safety issue, so for example, there's, may not be a requirement for a fence and any ground-mounted home-type system should have a fence around it to keep children or others from, you know, getting onto the equipment. So that, that allows them to add that safety requirement. The next change under thirty-five eighty point two-one, that was language that was part of the twenty-nineteen amendment. And it was placed in the wrong area, so I moved it into this paragraph where it should be placed. And we go several pages to section thirty-five eighty point two-five, dimension and density requirements. And so we added a paragraph, "Large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall follow the dimensional and density requirements of section thirty-five eighty point two-five and as delineated in thirty-five eighty point two-five point one point one, table of dimensional requirements for large ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, both conventional and dual-use." And then in terms of the setbacks, some of this language was already included for dual-use. But, so the planning board may allow reduced setbacks for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations for both conventional and dual-use solar arrays as specified below. And so, so it allows reduced setbacks of screening, but no less than twenty-five feet when abutting the residential agricultural zoning district. Provided that, provided standard setbacks and or screen requirements are waived in writing by any director abutters in a RA's zoning district. Director abutters who do not wish to grant a way, setback waiver will retain the two-hundred-foot setback along their abutting boundary. An affidavit signed by any owners of record of all director abutters within a RA zoning district must be filed with the planning board in reference in the special permit decision.
Can I stop you for a second, Jim?
Sure.
So my question, when I was looking at this earlier tonight, was that prior to what you just said, let's see. Go back to provided standard setbacks and or screening requirements are waived in writing by, you're striking off and changing it for any director abutters and we're striking residential agricultural zoning altogether and just leaving it district?
No, just RA district.
Okay, so my RA looked like it was crossed out.
Right, so it's actually the parent, so just say RA district, so we're just abbreviating that.
Okay.
And the reason for this was, the way the, the, the bylaw is now is that it, it, it sounds like if, if they had ten abutters around a solar project and nine of them signed to reduce the setback or the screening requirements, but one refused to do that, then the project couldn't happen because that one person. So what we're seeing with these changes here is, is that if nine of them out of the ten decided that they would sign affidavits to reduce the setback and screening, then they could have reduced setbacks to their property. But if that one person who didn't want to sign, or didn't want to sign an affidavit to reduce the setbacks of screening, then his, that person's screening would, would be the two-hundred-foot and it would have to be screened as per the bylaw. So that way it allows projects to happen if people want to reduce their setbacks of screening. And if a person doesn't want that, then, then that person will get the screening and the, and the setback as required by the bylaw. So, so that way it, so that allows a little more flexibility in the bylaw, that's all. But it's still, all the abutters have to agree either to, to sign an affidavit and, and and if, if they don't care, because we've had projects where, you know, for an example, we've had some projects where the neighbors say, yeah, you, you can reduce the setbacks to my house, you know, and, and then I, I only need partial screening, I don't need full screening. But if the person on the other side of the project says, no, I, I don't go with that, you know, I, I won't reduce my setback or screening requirements, then that project ends right there. But we figure that we can keep everybody happy if, if a person, if, if an owner says, yeah, you know, I don't mind, I'll, I'll do. "Yeah, you know, I don't mind, I'll, I'll do a reduced setback and reduced screening," that's fine. But if a person says, "No, you know, I, I still want the full screening and the, and the full setback," then that'll happen to them. So nobody is hurt by that. It just grants a little more flexibility in the bylaw.
I'm sorry, as long as we're on this section, why are we recommending that it go from a fifty-foot minimum to a twenty-five-foot minimum in a residential agricultural zone?
So there was, what was changed when they changed it for the dual-use, so that was brought down to twenty-five feet and, and that, but then a conventional array was still at fifty feet. And so trying to do is just make, make the setback requirements uniform between the type of arrays.
And, and where is this in the dual-use? I thought we were adding dual-use to our, our usage chart now.
So dual-use has already been added in twenty-nineteen. So we had, you know, confusion from various parties as to what standards apply. All right, is it twelve-and-a-half feet for a conventional solar array or is it twenty-five? So the goal was to try to make it all consistent.
And why would, wouldn't we err on the side of caution and remain with fifty feet?
Because, well, dual-uses which are higher have, were allowed shorter or less shortened setbacks. And I said, okay, well, that's, that for dual-use which are taller, more visible, then why not for the conventional arrays?
Well, why wouldn't we just stick with the fifty feet? I think it would be in the best interest of the town in maintaining the rural character and environment of the neighborhood unless you could provide a hundred percent screening because it's going to be seen from residential areas.
Well, this was brought up because of, it was one cranberry bog owner and another cranberry bog owner. So if they both wanted solar arrays on their property, as it is now, this cranberry bog owner would have to be fifty feet from his property line.
Well, no, that's a different section. That's section B. I'm, I'm just wondering about section A. Because section B brings it down to twelve-and-a-half feet where bogs are abutting or proposed in mutual partnership or ownership, which is, which is fine, but honestly, I think reducing setbacks to twenty-five feet is, it's a little short-sighted in the long-term interests of the town. They're, they're large-scale, they're going to be there twenty to thirty years and at the twenty-five foot, even if it's okay with the neighbor, it's still visible from the streets and certainly affects the rural characteristics of the town of Carver. And I would recommend keeping it at fifty feet in order to bring it into alignment with the other section rather than reducing it.
Well, I think this, this has to do with a butter's nut, not the street itself.
Right, but it'll still be visi- visible from a public way with, it is a large-scale and with only a twenty-five-foot setback in, in a residential zone, it's still going to be affecting what we're trying to maintain in the town.
Well, this is pretty much what I was talking about, though. I mean, we're allowing the setback to twenty-five feet in this, in this particular one only if waived in writing by the director abutters. Director abutters who do not wish to grant a setback waiver will retain the two-hundred-foot setback along their abutting boundary. And it's pretty much, you know, the way I explained it at the beginning, though.
No, I, I see that, like, this guy can, can waive it and we have the ability to bring it down to twenty-five feet. But honestly, is that in the best interest of maintaining the rural characteristics of the town of Carver, which is, which is part of our charge?
Well.
It will be, large-scale photovoltaic installations will be clearly visible from, from public ways and, and that's also affecting the town as a whole as opposed to just a singular abutting.
Well.
Might not. For example, the site that we walked today.
That's right.
Was right off of Route fifty-eight and had plenty of screening from.
Right, but the site we walked two weeks ago, they had a proposed fifty-foot setback and it, it only provided about thirty percent screening and it was clearly visible from the surrounding residents. And, and at this moment, they haven't brought it back to us because they're still trying to work out some sort of.
Right, so they would, so they would have to work on the screening aspect to the satisfactorian, satisfactorian of the neighbor in order to move forward.
Right.
There's only one neighbor that was concerned about, you know, the, the screening from his residential property.
Right, well, a committee put together a two-hundred-foot setback and, and what we're proposing is giving the planning board the ability to reduce that by almost ninety percent when they feel, when, when it's applied for or if, if the proponent asks for it. And, and I feel the will of the town in maintaining the, the rural characteristics of the town that a fifty-foot screening, a reduction from two-hundred feet to fifty-foot is, is more than appropriate. Because what percentage are we reducing according to this from, from, from the business or commercial district? That's as, that's only a, I suppose it's the same.
Right, so.
But that's, that's what you.
So it's fifty feet for all other districts.
Right, and, and so you're.
Abutting the residential district.
You're bringing that down by fifty percent and that's kind of, that's, that's heavily favoring the businesses in, in percentage reduction as opposed to an eighty-seven-and-a-half percent reduction from two-hundred feet to, to twenty-five feet in, in the residential districts. I, I know it's a sore point, the solar and some of the issues that we faced in this town, but I, I think that the, the committee spent a long, hard process of, of coming up with a two-hundred-foot setback and being able to reduce it by eighty-seven-and-a-half percent is, is really taking a lot of, a lot of power out of the residents of the town and, and what, what their ability is to. I, I would recommend maintaining it at fifty feet.
Well, but, but this is, this only happens if, if the, the, the abutter signs.
Right, but I'm saying.
To allow that.
This affects more than just the abutter. If, if I'm going for my walk and I'm walking down the street and the abutters says, "Okay, I'll reduce it to twenty-five feet," and I'm going for what used to be my nice little walk there, but now I have to wear my sunglasses or stare at solar panels because the setbacks have been reduced so much, it doesn't feel like I'm taking a nice little walk in a rural countryside road, which is kind of what I, one of the best parts of Carver, and now it feels I'm walking, like I'm walking through an industrial or commercial area. That, that's, that's the point I'm, I'm trying to get. I, I would strongly recommend keeping it at the, the fifty feet and, and bringing them both into alignment on that, that section. What are the setbacks for large-scale developments in this town? I believe there, most of those are fifty feet unless it's a fifty-five or over development, then we allow reductions in it. Because that's to the greater benefit of the town. But other than that, we try and maintain a fifty-foot buffer zone between any large development and the residential areas, and I think we should continue to maintain that with a fifty-foot buffer zone at, at the minimum.
So would this be for both, both, then would this be for both dual-use and, and ground-mounted?
Well, now that we're incorporating them both into this.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, it, it seems to me on this one, the, when you're looking at the abutter, you're talking about having the abutters, you got your road, you've got the abutter, the end of his property, another twenty-five feet, then the solar.
I'm talking, so.
Right, but it still has to have the not-seen-from-the-road screening.
We're allowing that reduction.
No, we're, we're not allowing that reduction.
We're allowing a reduction for up to fifty percent of the screening, I thought. Vegetative screening.
Well, potentially.
Right, should be provided for fifty percent of the specified setback, so technically the abandoned house that, that's out in Plymouth Street that just got bought there. Say the gentleman out back there, it's, it's pretty much a staple in Carver looking out at those cranberry fields, they've been there forever. But say he applied for this, that screening of twenty-five feet would be in the back of that open area, so those would still be clearly visible even if you attempted to put in a hundred percent, that, that, there would no, be no way to achieve anywhere near a hundred percent with a twenty-five-foot vegetative buffer.
It wouldn't be the right place for it.
It wouldn't be the right place for it and it might not meet the, the recommendations, but that's not the only singular property in town where this would apply to. I mean, there's, there's plenty of them. We got one across the street here that has no screening whatsoever right in the center of town.
Well, the reason why we have our solar by panel meeting.
And that's part of what that came about and they worked very hard to, to make these setbacks of two-hundred feet from other people's property. And I don't think that we should take lightly that we're going to reduce that by eighty-seven-and-a-half percent from two-hundred feet down to twenty-five feet. I think we need to respect the will of the committees that worked long, hard hours to put those together to protect the town of Carver.
Right, but apparently there was another committee that made recommendations for the dual-use, which had also the lesser setbacks alternative, you know, the ability to do it provided that you got waivers from, from the abutters.
And, and I get that.
But this.
This is, this is how I feel, so unless we can maintain a fifty-foot, I am in favor of all the other changes, but I think reducing setbacks by such a degree is detrimental to the long-term interests of the town of Carver and the rural character that we're trying to maintain.
Okay, so if, if we kept this at fifty feet, so this would be fif- okay, so yes, so right now, dual-use can go up to twenty-five by the bylaw that we have right now in place. Dual-use can go up to twenty-five with a waiver, but ground-mounted can only go to, can go to fifty?
Makes no sense because the dual-use stands higher.
Yep.
And is, is going to be much more.
That goes to my point.
Would be, would be, but, but at the same time, though, by not allowing, by your, your.
I'm saying in order to bring them into alignment, we should be bringing them into what, what is best in the long interests of the town, and I feel that that's fifty feet and not twenty-five feet. So instead of reducing them, and reducing conventional to twenty-five, we should be increasing dual-use to fifty.
But is there anything in here that says we will be required to reduce it to twenty-five? Does the. A butter have a say in how close he wants it? Does he have a choice of twenty-five or two-hundred?
He has to sign a waiver. Yeah, he has to sign an affidavit saying that, that instead of the fifty-foot, I'll, I'll do the twenty-five. Because there are, I'm only, you know, just trying to give examples and, you know, not ignorant one way or the other here.
No, I, I get it.
But, I mean, we've, we've run into things where there's a lot of vegetation, a lot of trees, a lot of bushes, and so the person says, "Hey, you know, you, you can, you can bring him twenty-five feet, that's fine." Other times it's elevations in the property where the solar field may be up higher and the house is down at the bottom of the hill or something, and so, you know, the, if the solar field comes closer to the property line, that neighbor is not going to see it. I can, you're saying that what it does is it will increase by twenty-five feet in some instances what you see from the street?
I'm saying that unless you are, are requiring from public ways the, the general screening requirements, at this point, it could be go down to twenty-five feet with a minimum of fifty percent vegetative screening, which, which is a lot. If we're going to reduce the setbacks, I think you still have to maintain the screening, which, which isn't being done. So I think twenty-five feet in the larger scheme of things may not seem like much, but in the long-term interests of the town, I feel it is, it's, it's an important aspect to it.
Now, you know, that could be a decision. The reason this came about was, is that there are cranberry growers that have smaller cranberry bogs, but they still, they still needed the help of, of solar on their property to help them maintain their, their cranberry bogs because they weren't making enough money on the cranberry bogs. So while what this does, reducing the setbacks, will allow the solar fields to be built on, on some cranberry bogs that may not have enough area if the setbacks aren't reduced.
And that's, that's fine, but reducing from two-hundred feet to twenty-five feet, I think is, is excessive. But, but that's just my opinion, my thoughts on the subject.
Right, right. But so which would make it, so I don't know how would we, so already we, we have reduced the ones for the, the dual-use have been reduced to twenty-five. So you still want to, and so what we're trying to do with this section of the bylaw here, what this is trying to do is, is to let the ground-mounted go from fifty to twenty-five.
Right, right, and I'm saying that it shouldn't be going the other way. It should be going from twenty-five to fifty. That's, that's my feeling on, on what, on this particular subject.
Well, I don't know. What, all I can say, when we run into something like this, we just have to ask the other board members how they feel. And then, I guess, I mean, well, I, I understand your point and.
That's why there's five of us here.
That's right, that's right. So I guess it'll just end up in the vote to recommend. Everybody will have to take that into consideration, I guess. Yes?
Is there a cap on how many solar fields Carver can have? Is there a maximum?
No, nothing that I know of, no. And, and, but as we go into this bylaw, we've, we've had a lot of difficult, well, I can't say the difficult, but we've, but we've had some instances where, you know, where these solar projects have come into place and, and some have gone because objections from the planning board or the neighbors. And so they didn't, they didn't become a, a project. But as we read further through the changes here, we're trying to allow solar fields to be in places that we'd like to encourage where they can't be seen from the street or from neighbors. And I think there's areas in Carver where that can be accomplished. And, but, but I think Jim just wanted to bring this in alignment with, so that the two solar fields were, had the same setback.
Could go either way, it depends on, kind of the will of the board, I don't know if we want to take a sensible.
And I understand what Connie says, but it, it does, but I understand what John says, too. It doesn't really make a lot of sense for the lower ground-mounted to be further away from a property line than the, than the dual-use which is higher.
Well, we're bringing them into alignment, so this would push the higher, the higher dual-use solar arrays further back, so they would be less visible from the road. But if I could make a motion to, to change it to fifty and if it's not seconded or it's voted on and it fails, then that's fine, too.
Yeah, I suppose we could do it that way. Yeah, I suppose we could do it that way.
So I would make a motion, then in section thirty-five, eighty-point-two-five-point-one, in regards to setbacks, section A, that the setbacks should be, remain at the fifty-foot minimum.
I'd like to second that.
So we have a motion by Cornishay and a second by Ellen Sedillo. And so further discussion, so what you're saying is, is you want to, you want to increase the dual use to fifty feet from twenty-five?
Right, to maintain the conventional use at fifty and then to increase the dual use, which is a higher, almost twice as high, right? The ones we're looking at today were ten to sixteen, ten at the bottom to sixteen feet at the top, maybe, maybe.
Or it's thirteen.
Thirteen, so it is a lot higher and should have.
At least fifty feet.
I would think.
Although, the reduction was done at town meeting.
And so was the establishment of a two-hundred-foot setbacks, but we've changed those, too.
Well, all this is a recommendation to go to town meeting. It's still going to have to be changed at town meeting.
It could still be.
It doesn't get, it doesn't, right, all this is just what we're submitting to town meeting.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, so we had a motion to, to, to let, keep the fifty-foot for the ground-mounted setback, and then to increase the dual use from twenty-five to fifty. And this is.
Only when abutting the residential agricultural properties.
All right. Yeah, is there any comments from, from, any information that anybody else would like to say? Yes?
Hi, Fran Mallow, thirty-eight Mallow Street. I just want to bring to the board's attention that all of these were vetted through the bylaw study committee, all of the things that you're viewing tonight, with the exception of just three of these recommendations. The first one that was passed by earlier on the height, we did not talk about that. We did not talk about the solar arrays, canopies, I'm sorry, the solar canopies, and we did not talk about the single-family cluster development. There was a lot of talk about this solar bylaw going back and forth. And I do think that Connie's recommendation is a good one. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Some of these bylaws had been run by the last planning board, but a lot of these didn't go to town meeting because of the COVID. We didn't bring all the articles. So I thought it might be good to, to bring these to our bylaw study committee. But then we get, we get tied up with the TDRs. And so, since the planning board before this one had already looked at this, at some of these, we just decided that maybe this, you know, I figured that this planning board here, our new planning board, should have the opportunity, of course, to take a look at these things. So that's, but not all of these have gone through the bylaw committee. Not to say that later on, we may take a look at some of these bylaws afterwards, and we can, and we can change them for another town meeting. But the reason that a lot of these came up was the difficulties that Jim was having, trying to interpret the bylaws and try to make sense with them, especially with, you know, different projects coming in. So that's why we thought that it was important for the, for this planning board to take a look at them, even though we didn't have a chance to do it with the bylaw committee. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there further discussion? Anybody on, on the internet? So seeing no other comments, so let's take a vote on the bylaw revision.
You're just focused on this one section?
On this one section, on whether we should, yeah, what we should do with these setbacks. Whether we should, yeah, it's either to, to, to keep the fifty-foot setback for the, for the ground-mounted and to increase the, the elevated system, the dual use, from twenty-five to fifty-foot. Like, you know, and I was just trying to think, what other examples were there that, for the reduction to the twenty-five feet? I guess it was just to increase the size of the area so that some of the growers could, could put the solar panels on their property. I can't think. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote for the change.
Cornelius Shea says aye to the change.
John Gasky says aye to the change.
Bruce Mackey says no.
Evan Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
All right, so it's, so it's four to one to make the change for town meeting. Do you want to, do we want to continue? It's approaching nine-thirty. Do you want to, we're gonna, we have another meeting set for next week, right?
That's correct. We could just go through the rest of the.
You want to go through the rest?
Just finish maybe the solar and then deal with the rest at the next meeting.
Okay.
I would, if you're accepting motions, I would make a motion to accept with the amended change the rest of the solar bylaw. If you're accepting.
Oh, okay, so you don't care to go through the rest of it?
No, no, I mean, you're welcome to go through it, but, and open it up for discussion after this.
Is there, see, there are only a few more changes, right, Jim?
Uh, so that, then there's the twelve-point-five, but that's where there's a abutting bog.
Right, okay.
Property in mutual ownership. And then the next one down is when they're abutting bogs, which goes down to twelve-point-five. Probably, you know, just the other kind of big thing is currently, solar projects have to follow, you know, the required frontage in.
Okay, yeah, we should talk about that.
District, so I want to point that out so that everyone's aware of that. And so the proposal here is that it's allow the planning board flexibility for sites that are well-sited.
Where's this?
So that's, it's in the, in the footnotes to the chart. So where it says access, so it has footnote number one for the table. So there's a table three-five-eight-zero-point-two-five-point-one-point-one footnotes, then footnote one. And that reads, "The planning board may waive all or part of the required street frontage of the underlying zoning district for sites that are well-suited for solar development due to the ability to maximize screening from residential uses and other factors. Proponents of sites seeking screening waivers must meet accessibility requirements of the Carver Fire Department." Actually, that doesn't read right. "If the proponent is seeking to use an easement or right-of-way owned by another party, the proponent shall provide a written agreement showing that there is access to the, to the solar project for the life of the project." So let me just take a look at it. I think maybe captured that proponents of sites. I think it's just proponents must meet, should read proponents must meet accessibility requirements of the Carver Fire Department. I think when we do in some edits, we captured some stray, stray language.
Now, what's the current frontage requirement?
So in the RA district is a hundred-and-fifty feet. So, and I'd have to look at the book for the other districts. But, so we, we had one that was, you know, kind of a cause for an appeal between the planning board and the zoning board. But then the applicant went out and just bought extra land from someone else. But there are some sites that, you know, they're off the road, they're off.
Like we were at today, yeah, sure.
And so they're not, or minimally visible from, you know, other residential areas.
Can we get a minimum width requirement for the, the emergency vehicles that we have? What's the requirement?
So it's usually twelve feet with two feet on each side and sixteen, sixteen-foot clearance overhead. Did I have that right, Sarah, more or less?
So a minimum of a sixteen-foot clear open space for?
Right, so for the most part, yeah. It's a twelve-foot wide road, that's typically the Carver Fire Department standard. And then we just kind of leave it to them, because they can take a look at a situation that, and say, okay, well, in order for you, for the access to work for the fire department, you need to do this, 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 and this. And so that would be part of the, you know, the condition.
And this would be requiring the fire department to sign off on any, any front, any access?
Right, so they do that regardless with any project. So, so they're, they're still are in play with that. And so they would have to be satisfied, as they are now, with the access to a property. But it just gives the flexibility in a situation where, you know, it's an agricultural operation, maybe they only have ninety feet of frontage, that, you know, the planning board could say, okay, yep, that's acceptable. Or it could be that they may have, you know, the equivalent of, say, like a rear lot frontage in one area, but for hundreds of years, they've been using a shared access somewhere else off another street, that that could be, you know, so long as they have an agreement with the owner of the land, you know, some sort of easement or other access agreement for the life of the project, and it meets fire department approval, use that as the access to get into that property. It just, you know, because frontage is good because, you know, for, if you have a, you know, a structure with a house or office building, that makes sense. But whereas, you know, co-located with agricultural operation, and there's not going to be people there during, during the day, other than to go and do maintenance, but, you know, they're kind of in and out, similar to agricultural operation. That's kind of the logic I put behind it. So I just wanted to point that out to the board so that, you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah, because it wasn't.
So go through and say, okay, yeah, well, oh, I didn't know that was part of the proposal. So what do I do with that footnote number one? Is where it starts off proponents, and it says, currently it reads proponents of sites seeking screen waivers. I would cross out of sites seeking screen waivers. And then we're, then it would read proponents must meet accessibility requirements of the Carver Fire Department. Want to see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Say that again.
So footnote number one, "The planning board may waive all or part of the required street frontage of the underlying zoning district for sites that are well-suited for solar development due to the ability to maximize screening from residential uses and other factors." Currently, it says proponents of sites seeking screening waivers must meet accessibility requirements. That of sites seeking screening waivers, that's a typo that should not be in there. So what I'm suggesting, we cross that out.
Proponents must meet accessibility requirements.
Of the Carver Fire Department.
Right, okay. So just for a question here, the thirty-five-eighty-point-two-five-point-one-point-one, that chart and the footnotes are all being inserted?
Yes.
Okay, so it's all, that's all new stuff, okay.
So it's, it's taken existing information and just kind of consolidated into a chart form. And so with that, so for example, on the chart itself, where it says, we just had that vote to increase the minimum setbacks in the RA district, so that would be with RA waivers, so that would be increased to fifty from twenty-five. And then it would stay the same, that's, twenty-five feet would stay the same for the other zoning districts.
And section two of the footnotes, too, that would.
Oh, and then section two, okay.
That should be, yeah, note two should be fifty feet.
Okay, so make that change. Okay, so that's it. And everything else look okay to everybody? It was the table and the footnotes that kind of the figures changed, and everything else. Oh, okay, one more addition. So after being here for a year, you kind of get into the flow of projects. So a lot of what happens is that one company will come in and get a project approved, get the special permit from the planning board. And then between the time the planning board approves it and they comes in for a building permit, is that the company changes hands. So they'll sell their solar project to another party. And so we had some problems with the, you know, one particular property in question. But the thought was to add a section so that when there is a sale or transfer of the project, that the parties come before the planning board to review the plans and conditions, to make sure that they understand, the new party understands what the, what the plans are going forward, what the conditions are, and that they must meet those conditions. Or they have the option to come in also to request a modification. Sometimes after they get their interconnection agreement with Eversource or go through that whole process, there's some changes that Eversource, you know, I'm not going to say asked, but they really require the applicant to make. So at that time, you know, that's where we would do a modification. But, so that's another section that was added in to address that particular issue, so that.
This is thirty-five-eighty-fourty-four?
Yep, thirty-five-eighty-fourty-four. If you read through that, if you have any suggestions to change the language, just let me know to make it read easier.
I just have a question. When they apply for, for this, there's a project proponent which must be listed. Now, if the project is sold, wouldn't that invalidate the application?
No, so they have an approved project, so it is kind of common, like with housing developments. So a developer can come in, they get a subdivision approved, and then they can either sell off the individual lots or the entire project itself. And it's, so that's kind of similar to like a solar project. Someone comes in, they get the permitting, you know, from the planning board on it, the special permit. Then they, they're entitled to sell that project to another party. So there's just a way to, you know, bring everybody in to say, okay, you know, here's what was approved. You know, do you need any changes? If not, then this is what you should expect going forward to. If not, then this is what you should expect going forward to get your building permit.
Excellent.
All right. Anybody in the audience have any other comments? Yes, Sarah?
Just something on that last one, Jim, something you mentioned, for the sale or transfer. Would you anticipate that that would be, if passed at town meeting, incorporated as a condition to an issued permit as opposed to just listed in the solar section of the bylaw?
It would be, yeah, listed as a condition.
Yeah, okay. I think that would make it clear because that tends to be the document that travels with, you know, any materials that go to the next party. So if it's listed clearly in the decision, I think that that would be helpful to just for the owner to understand that they have to come back to the board.
Right, just to go through everything. And then I think the other thing too is that when I'm having discussions with various parties, I always refer to their investors. And then the investors are looking at also the bylaw so that they could see that in the bylaw. But then it's also for projects that we haven't captured with the condition yet, this would capture those, you know, projects that get sold off until we're able to put the conditions in.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody on the internet that would like to make any comments before we vote to recommend? Okay, none, okay. All right, so entertain a motion to recommend the revised solar bylaw with the revisions that have been made to it tonight.
I'll make the motion to recommend the solar bylaw with the amended motions, amended sections.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Gasky. Further discussion, seeing none, let's vote.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Okay, so it's 5-0 to recommend. I'll say, so we'll leave the rest of these. We'll go back to the marijuana. And we'll do solar canopies and single-family cluster development at our next meeting, which will be
Tuesday, March 9.
Okay, Tuesday, March 9 at 7 o'clock. Okay. So entertain, so we have, we'll have to make a motion to continue. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, March 9 at 7 o'clock.
I make that motion. I still make that motion.
Okay, so Cornelia Shea made the motion and need a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen Sedillo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I want to thank the board members for, I'd say, a pretty smooth evening reviewing these bylaws. There was a lot of changes here tonight, so I think we did well. All right, so
Good night, everybody on Zoom.
So we have planning board member notes, planning director notes. We don't have any minutes. Next meeting will be March 9 at 7. And entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Kevin Robinson made the motion.
Second.
Second by John Gasky. Take a roll call vote.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
All right, that's it. Good night, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you.